All right, now being four o'clock, I'll call the April 22nd meeting of the Clinton Board of Selectmen to order. First item on our agenda is updates and discussions of the FY25 budget and town meeting articles, to be voting some recommendations. So Liz, do you want to take the lead on this one?
Sure. Why don't we start with the annual town meeting warrant?
Okay.
So I'll run through the different article numbers, and I think it's probably easier if I just go through each one, and then if you vote your recommendation in one vote at the end, but if you want to have more discussion, we can just hold on to a particular one.
Okay.
So Article 1 is the standard language that's always there. All right, so Article 2, this is the standard article for the town treasurer. Article 3 is the wage and personnel classification chart, and you'll notice this year, so the range differences went up by 3%, which was the cost of living adjustment that seemed to make the most sense, given town finances, looking at what social security was doing, and also what other communities were doing. You'll notice too in that the fire department is no longer included in that because they are unionized and effective July 1, they will be under CBA.
And this is all wage and personnel?
Yep. Article 4 is the standard language for the budget.
We'll come back to that later?
Yes, so we'll sit, when you vote on all these, we can hold the vote on Article 4 until we go through the budget.
Okay.
Just make a note of that. Okay. So Article 5 is the community preservation standard article. Article 6 is the community preservation article that involves funding restoration of the historic front entrance to this building. Article 7 is for, to conduct the financial audits for fiscal '25. Article 8 are all of the leases that were already agreed upon at prior town meetings, and those are all specifically noted in the chart. Article 9 is to appropriate additional money in the amount of $4,042, plus repurposing an existing $3,500 and change, and this is for the required 5% match for anticipated award of an AFG grant for the fire department for communications equipment. Article 10 is to replenish our very important town buildings and maintenance article. Article 11 is to replenish the information technology and equipment article. Article 12-
It's coming from where?
Uh, the 30, uh, let me just reference on my sheet. Do I have the right one? I think that one, we haven't discussed the funding source for that one yet.
So if it just says available funds and no transfer, it's kind of up in the air whether it's-
Yeah, so in the, when we make the motions, when we work on the motions, it'll have to specify the funding source.
Right. Yep. Sorry, where are we? Which-
We are on Article 11, we were on-
Which is Buildings and Maintenance?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
So Article 12 is to replenish the human resources article for advertising. Article 13 is to replenish the general consultant article. 14 is to, I had to renumber some too, just so you're aware, because there was one that Attorney Corbo had me pull off the warrant today. It was repurposing of funds, and he said we don't need it.
Yeah, I think that's why I'm being confused, because my numbers aren't the same.
Okay.
Okay.
They changed all by one number from what I sent you last week.
Okay.
Okay.
Article 14 is for the recreation fields, to replenish that one, and I'll send you an updated clean copy. 15 is for the $150,000 for road construction that the highway department typically requests, and that comes from capital stabilization. 16 and 17, therefore highway and police respectively, they're simply authorizing us to enter into a lease for the vehicles. The plan is to fund the first year lease payment if we do move forward, either through grant funding or through ARPA funds. So that has already been discussed with finance committee and everything, but we didn't want to have that be a raise inappropriate.
Raise inappropriate, okay.
Exactly. But we still need it on here for authorization to enter into a lease.
Yep.
Article 18 reverts things back to the way that they used to be with the police vehicles budget line, and it establishes a new revolving fund, so money that they take in for fees from the cruisers, details and stuff, can go into this revolving fund and be used to make future lease payments on vehicles, to get that to be a little more self-sustaining.
Nice.
19 is to work on continued bylaw codification, and it's with the online E-code. Article 20 is for the assessors for fiscal '25 real and personal property interim valuation. 21 is for a solar pilot agreement for Ring Road Solar.
And where's that on Ring Road? Is that the one down the end, or-
That's the one at the end.
At the end, okay.
22 is to get things up and running for the new fire station project, and also in regard to this one, in addition to Greg Corbo looking at it, we also had bond council review it to make sure that the language was okay.
Good.
And the treasurer is currently working with our financial person from Bartholomew on getting all the rates and what the payment structure would look like for that. 23 is for that property at Winnataxet for the two utility poles that are already in existence.
That was a big article for two voters.
I know.
Yeah, it is a big article.
And we have not heard anything from them. Rob has tried a couple times to go knock at the door. They did sign for their letter and everything, but we haven't had any communication. 24 is the standard Chapter 90 article. 25 is for the part-time SRO at Silver Lake Middle School. 26 is bylaw review committee, so the next several are bylaw review committee. They did a fantastic job going through and cleaning up more things that they identified in the bylaws, so 26-
So on these bylaws-
Yeah.
Have we normally recommended these?
Yeah.
Every year?
Yeah. The main recommendation though comes at town meeting from the planning board.
No, I understand that. My concern is, some of these can, I'm not saying these ones, but some of them can, you know, you change a line and all of a sudden it changes the meaning, and all of a sudden you've got a crowd of people saying, "Wait a minute."
If you don't want to give a recommendation on those, I mean, it's really the planning board recommendation that carries the weight in terms of zoning changes.
Right. I don't feel comfortable that I know, this is a lot of work they put into it.
I can remove the selectmen's line altogether. You're not required to take a vote on them if you're not comfortable. We could leave it to the planning board, which is where it naturally falls anyway.
Well, if we've done it in the past, I guess I'd like to discuss it with them first. So for this one, I don't have a problem, but it's next year.
Future town meetings, you'd want more. Okay.
And I would also like them to come in and tell us what's going on with this.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree with that, but I also support their hard work this year.
Yeah, definitely. 27 adds some language regarding accessory dwelling units. 28, that's just cleaning up some language.
Did the num, the numbers now switch back to the right numbers?
So I don't know what version you're looking, so there was one that I sent Thursday. Those numbers got updated, because I had to insert the fire article.
Yep.
And then they got updated again today, because Greg Corbo had me remove an article.
Okay, so which would get the numbers back?
Correct, correct.
Yep.
29 is just, again, more fixing of some existing language. 30 clarifies language. 31, same thing. 32 adds to the definitions section. 33 allows the town clerk to make a new section using E-code, and it makes a requirement for people to have a house number somewhere visible so that the fire department can identify.
So what's driving this?
I believe that it was a combination of the fire department, fire prevention, and the bylaw review committee. Bylaw review committee has been reaching out to all the different town departments over the last year to get, like, input as to what they think about certain things, and it was suggested by the fire department, and they liked the idea.
I like the idea, I just don't know how it's going to go down. We can't get people to put a little green sign with the number on it.
I don't know how enforceable it'll be, but I think it's a good start, at least for new construction.
Well, you're mandating every, every property.
Right.
All right.
34 is about off-street parking. And then 35 is the standard language from the town clerk for the ballot. So do you want to take a vote on all of those except for Article 4, which is the budget?
Sounds good to me.
Make a motion?
Yeah. Is that okay to you, Mark?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, all right, so I'll make a motion that the selectmen vote to recommend all the articles in the annual town meeting warrant, except Article 4.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Do you want to do the budget next?
We're going to do special?
Yeah, we can. I didn't know if you wanted to do the budget next to then get Article 4 recommended.
Yeah, why don't we do the budget and then go to the special?
Okay. So I sent everybody the budget. There have been no changes since what I sent out. Did anybody have questions or concerns on any of the lines?
I have a couple.
Okay.
Consultation agent, is that a matter of hours going up, or what's going on?
It's hours going up.
Okay.
Because they were supplementing some of his hours from the notice of intent fund that they have.
Yep.
But unfortunately, it's not enough to keep him consistently at his hours, and he is a huge asset to the town. He's doing a fantastic job, and he's also doing some work for the open space committee. So it's to get him up to a reliable number of hours per week, and not to have to rely so heavily on the notice of intent fund.
And finance committee is going down.
Yeah, they, um, so they actually took a vote, I'm glad you brought that up. They no longer want to mail the warrants to all of the households. They think that it's an additional cost, and it's not sustainable, and we have hard copies available at town meeting, and most people, it seems like, don't bring the copy with them anyway, and they take one at the door. So we're still going to have them printed, but we're avoiding the mail permit, the bulk mail permit expense, and it'll be on the website and on social media, and they, they voted to do that, since it's their one.
Who, who, I'm sorry, who's "they"?
Finance committee.
I had conversation with at least one who was thinking that it made more sense to continue to mail out.
I can verify that with them this evening. It's going to print tomorrow either way, so there's time if they want to mail. It's no different than our schedule any other year.
Oh, that's for this year?
Yes.
Oh my goodness.
They didn't think that it was sustainable to continue mailing it, and they thought it was-
I kind of, I mean, I just heard about this this afternoon, but I kind of feel differently. I mean, I think this is the thing to alert citizens that maybe wouldn't look anywhere else, to take a look at this.
If you'd like, I don't know how the rest of you feel, but if you feel strongly about it, if you want to have me speak to them at their meeting and express just some general concerns, I'm happy to do that.
I was at the meeting where they talked about this, and, you know, I thought it made sense in that it's a, it's a fairly large expense, and you can access it online, and you can access it at the meeting. But the trouble is, you, you have to have your interest piqued to access it anywhere, and unless it goes out in the mail, there's a whole bunch of people that this will just go right over their heads.
They wouldn't even know, yeah.
Honestly, I kind of feel like it's, it's a connection with the past and a traditional thing, and I just, I think we'll miss a whole bunch of people if we don't. It also is kind of a manifestation of our work and what we do, and-
I will express that then.
Okay, thank you.
Were there any other questions regarding the budget?
Um, hold on. So the assistant assessor went down. I didn't quite understand that.
So she's a retiree, so she's capped at the number of hours per week that she can work.
Okay, so that's strictly, and then the election support staff went up quite a bit, is that just more work, more, more elections?
Well, this is a presidential year.
Yes, it's because of the presidential election.
Highway superintendent?
You voted the salary adjustment for him, the $10,000.
Okay, that's what's in there.
Right.
Fire EMS expense went up quite a bit, something going on there?
Um, it's just all their general expenses, and it also takes into account the union contract, and there's one of their... She also budgeted certain supplies in there. We went all through this line by line with finance committee, but I'm happy to send them, send you a copy of the budget.
You're comfortable with it?
Oh, yes, yes.
No, I'm all right.
Yeah, I helped the chief put it all together.
Police salaries are up. Is that more people or just more hours, or how's that?
It's the school resource officer position that town meeting voted, and then it looks a little heavy because we had to factor in some extra to cover the sergeant shifts who is on active deployment, and we're required by law to carry that salary fully, because you don't really know what time somebody's orders are going to be ended and when they're coming back.
Right.
The only other thing is, I'm not questioning, it's the schools is going to be a hard one for somebody to go through, but, you know, because of the, you're way up and them way down, but you end up up quite a bit.
Correct. I know that Jason will be well-equipped to walk everybody through that.
He's the man who can explain.
Right.
Can I acknowledge a little bit of work went into this?
Yes.
Like, half of your life for the last six months or so?
Yeah, huge amount of work.
Yes.
Beautiful.
Thank you.
Yeah, well done, Liz, everything.
I agree.
Thank you.
All right, so I'll make a motion that the selectmen recommend Article 4 at the annual town meeting.
As printed.
Second, as printed, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, so that's the annual.
Okay, now the special. Article 1 is for an unpaid bill from a prior fiscal year. I believe this is for the police department for one of the training councils that they belong to.
So this takes a 90% vote.
I was going to find out if they have any money left in a gift account. It would be nice to just wipe this one out altogether, but I have to find that out by, like, tomorrow, when I'm going to send it to print.
We've had other ones in the years, and it always gets voted.
It does.
Right.
Unanimous usually.
So that's the first one. The second one is for a community preservation project, and that is for the lighting and making some adjustments at Holt Field. Articles 3, 4, and 5, so 3 and 4, we're not even certain that we need. We may be able to pass over when we get to town meeting. You'll notice that there's no dollar amount plugged in for those, but it was just there more or less as a placeholder. The reserve fund is still fully intact with $130,000, and nobody has applied for reserve fund transfers yet.
Really?
So, and we still have for police salaries, look like they're running a little over, but we haven't applied yet the money in the school resource officer article to that. So that's $71,000. So we may end up not needing 3 and 4, but wanted them on there to be safe.
Just in case, right.
5, we are going to need, this is for the projected deficit at Dennett Elementary School. Jason Frazier and his colleagues on the school committee are working very hard to narrow that down better, and they want to see if they're able to kind of fund some of the deficit from some of their other budget lines. They did implement a spending freeze and everything, but in case we need to vote to do anything out of free cash, or whatever it may be, we have the article on here.
Right.
Have you got a rough idea, you think?
Originally, they were talking about $200,000, but now it sounded like it was down around, I want to say 130, but they're, they're doing their best to get it down. That was as of a few weeks ago, so I have a feeling that it's come down more. And I'm just trying to go off the top of my head. Honestly, I'd have to look back at the correspondence with them.
Didn't know whether it was 13,000 or 130.
So that's the special.
Okay. Any questions or concerns on the special?
None, none, it's good, no.
Okay, all right, I'll make a motion that the selectmen recommend the articles on the special town warrant, special town meeting warrant as printed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I ask a question, Liz, on the proposed funding information?
Yes. So I edited that last minute. The finance committee had some concerns about utilizing any ARPA funds to offset-
The teacher?
Yes, the teacher one. We're well enough below the max levy that it really doesn't matter, and in thinking more about it over the last few days, I think it might be better to leave that alone, fund it as we normally would through the budget process, and keep that money intact in ARPA.
Okay, as long as we don't lose it in an ARPA, I'm fine.
No, we definitely won't lose it. The local money is already here, like, in our coffers, so to speak, so we'll make sure that we utilize that.
So the, the thing that I have a question on is the ambulance fund.
Yes.
We're using 230, and well, that's a balance of 257.
Mm-hmm.
And what's, how many more years, do we have a sense of the ambulance?
Um-
Because that's not a lot of money for a new ambulance.
No, it's not, and the cost has gone up a lot since we purchased the last one.
I'm just worried that we won't have enough when we have to make it.
I think we'll be fine for at least the next few years, but it's definitely something, we had talked a little at finance committee about maybe in the future, sort of earmarking a certain dollar amount, maybe every year, or a percentage of what's come in, and specifically identify monies in that fund that we're not going to touch, to keep intact for a new one.
Yeah, I'd like to know, like, if it's $750,000 to buy a new ambulance.
I want to say that was roughly what was quoted, because I, I believe the last one we got was in the 300 to 400 range, and it's gone up almost double.
Right, so I'd just like to know that we get there.
Okay.
Okay.
Understood.
Good, I'm fine.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Liz, for all of that, the hard work and coordination.
And I'm sure the finance committee will thank you too.
Yes, I'm sure they do. I'm sure they're very appreciative.
Do they take you out to dinner or anything?
Nope.
I don't know.
Shake your hand, say thank you.
Yes.
Well done.
Yes.
Warrants paid.
Um, I do not have the figure from Brigitte, so if we could hold that at the next meeting, we can do the full total.
Definitely. Okay, do you have an update for us, Liz?
Yes. So our vendor is putting the finishing touches on a Green Communities application. The deadline for applying is May 10th, so we hope to get another application in for this round. I believe we're going to try again for the library heating system. They made a lot of edits to the application, and we're hopeful that it'll be enough to trigger all the appropriate incentives that we might need. Like, last time we got turned down, because they said we had used too many of the utility rebates on the first project that we did over there, but that's really important, because that boiler over there is on its last legs. So they're working on that, and then otherwise, it's really just been busy with all of these preparations and putting the finishing touches on all of the numbers and everything.
You saw the thing I sent you that Christine had recommended?
Yes, I think we should definitely pursue that.
Yeah, so we need to go after that.
Good.
Yeah, I think, anything-
It'll be nice if, yeah, we could either get some grant money, or maybe very low-interest loan, something.
Something, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, even a low-interest loan would be a big help.
Right.
Okay.
All right, anything correspondence?
No.
All right, so we've, next item is the minutes from March 25th. Those were short and sweet, Bree sent those out. The only thing I had called out was, she had roll call votes on there, but it wasn't, it was an in-person vote, not-
Good catch.
Yeah, so, but everything else, oh, good, so.
That's right.
Okay, all right, I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes from 3/25 that Bree had amended for us.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Looked like five minutes.
Yeah, they did, I love it.
Did you guys meet while I was not here?
We had to make an appointment.
Have those minutes been approved, or has she not done those yet?
It was, I think that was the meeting. Where were you going?
But the 3/25 one was a regular meeting that I was at. It would have been sometime the week of April 8th, that you had the special meeting.
We did.
So were these minutes from April 8th, that you just adjusted the roll call vote, was that April 8th?
I think that might have been April 8th.
All right.
Let me take a peek.
So approving April 8th is done, but then, I believe she sent out the 25th a while ago.
All right, let me just take a peek here.
But if you need me to hold the 25th, I can.
I, I didn't bring that stuff, but it may be that one of those was the one that I did.
Or 3/25, so Bree did send those out, and I had suggested a small edit under the correspondence section on the town administrator signing the agreement. I didn't love the language, so she had resent that out on 3/25. I don't think they were real long minutes, but you're right, Liz, these are the ones from our meeting to make the appointment.
So 4/8 has been approved. Are you comfortable approving 3/25 tonight?
Okay, so, let's see what she changed here. So TA requests the BOS approve her signing of the Labor Council rate acknowledgement, client fee agreement between the town and the law firm, me, Teller, Man, Costa. CJ made the motion to authorize the TA to sign the agreement between. So she changed the language to make it more simple and clear-cut. So she did send that out, if you guys are okay with-
Voting those?
Voting those?
I am okay.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of 3/25 as Bree had amended for us.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so the minutes that we just did-
3/25, and what were the ones, when did you meet, the week of the 8th?
I think, didn't we meet on Thursday?
I think so.
I can verify that, and I'll do the minutes from today.
All right, let's see. So that was a meeting, yeah, I've got us on the 11th-
Okay.
At 12 o'clock, that's right.
Yeah.
Because we met at noon time.
Okay.
So, um-
So I will make those notes.
Okay, so that was for 11 minutes that we had voted to approve with Bree's-
Okay.
That Bree amended.
So we're up to date.
We're up to date.
We're up to date, so we're current.
Great.
Okay.
And now it's just, I think, the executive. And now it's just, I think, the executive.
Okay. All right, so any raves before we close out and go into executive session?
Uh, just, no, it's not going to be a rave, so I'll pass.
Okay. All right, well, my rave would be, once again, Liz and the financial team, all the hard work that it goes into creating the warrant and vetting all the articles and coming up with funding sources and transferring money, and it's a huge process, and it's, you do a wonderful job, and we're lucky to have you.
Certainly professionalized from where we were, say, four months.
Absolutely, to take the lead on this, on our behalf. So, thank you, Liz, very much.
Thank you.
So totally agree with all that, and it's not only the finished product this year, but the system, the process that's been put in place that's going to make this easier and easier. And my other rave is for a new word I learned called fond essence, which I think is a Greek word, but it's that word for when things unfurl, as is happening right now. It's like peak fond essence of the leaves and the flowers of a woman.
How do you spell that?
Frond, which-
Oh, frond essence.
Yeah, I probably didn't pronounce it right.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's my rave for that word.
All right, very good. All right, so all we have left on our agenda is executive session. Our next meeting will be on May 6th, so I'll make a motion that we wrap things up in open session. We adjourn, or move into executive session, and upon the completion of executive session, that we will adjourn. So, motion to go into executive session for purpose number two, and that's to conduct strategy sessions and preparations for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, and this is the police union and fire union, and upon completion of executive session, we will adjourn. So we've got a second roll call vote. Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy? Yes, Mr. Russo?
Yes.
All right, so we're, good night, everyone, good afternoon, whatever time you're enjoying this video. Thank you for joining us. Thanks.